Okay. All right, we are at 6:59. We are one minute to meeting starting time. So this is going to be a last call and then a roll call. If you would like to participate in public comment, we need you to raise your hand. If you are calling in on a phone, in order to raise your hand, you need to press star nine and then star six will unmute you when we bring you on. If you are on the computer or a tablet or a or you're using the video platform of Zoom directly, then what you need to do to raise your hand is open first, open up the participants. The participants panel, you can do that by mousing over the window with the with the view on it. And there'll be a an icon that says participants. Click on that and it'll expand to the participants panel. And then there should be an option in the bottom right to raise your hand. So this is going to be a last call for people to do that. Right now I have a roll call of seven or with.
Excuse me, Mike.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Tom has to drop off for about 10 minutes to take a very important call. He'll be back. Tom Esposito.
Okay, I will make sure to keep track of that. Okay, so this is the roll call I have so far before we do our final last call. Irene Scrabillo, I have you first. Michael Anastas, I have you second. Hillary Ram, I have you third. Jeff, I have you fourth. Ted Bear, I don't have the full name written down. I have you fifth. Theodore Hine, I have you sixth. And the phone in at 355-2723, I have you seventh.
I think Ted Bear and Ted Hine are the same person.
Okay, I'm sure we can correct that when we get to them.
Does he do that?
Okay, Dave Lawson's coming in, DeBella's coming in. All right. So Theodore Hine, I'm going to unmute you temporarily and just just to confirm that you are that you are Ted Bear.
Hi, Mike.
Theodore Hine, are you on?
That is correct. I just changed my name on the screen so that.
All right, that I will make sure to record that. Thank you.
Did you say Dave? Oh, there it is. Okay.
Dave's coming on. All right, where is Randy? Randy, I'm sending you the obligatory message invitation to unmute. You don't have to accept it right away if you don't want. All right, and David Lawson, your invitation is sent. All right, we are just I am just after I've got exactly 7:00. So Pete, the meeting goes to you.
Good evening, everybody. If we could stand for the pledge. And Chris, could you lead us in the pledge, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
I salute America. Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces, our first responders, and those 26 people who lost their lives in the Newtown massacre. May we remember and may their memory be eternal. Thank you. Katie?
Okay.
We got a public comment first?
Yes, we do. Perhaps, yes.
Could you start us off, please, sir?
All right, Irene, I'm sending you an invitation to unmute right now.
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, Irene.
Okay, Irene Scrabillo, 205 Pumpkin Hill Road. I'm here to comment on the tax deferral proposition for 46 Kent Road, which is item 9B on the very last page of the town council agenda. Local government should strive to avoid even the appearance of impropriety. Tax abatements are given to draw desirable companies that promote high-paying jobs to compete with other towns or state. It results in homeowners paying higher taxes to make up the shortfall, so it should only be used as a last resort. The property in question doesn't meet any of these criteria, providing only a few low-skilled, less-than-minimum-wage-paid jobs. And it'll the building itself is going to be a blight on the aesthetics of the town. The zoning decision was rendered with a great deal of opacity and does not benefit New Milford as a whole. Do not allow this tax deferral for 46 Kent Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, next.
So Michael Anastas, your invitation to unmute is here.
I'm visually muted, but I think you can hear me, correct?
Correct.
This, my name is Mike Anastas, and I live at 21 Lake Point Drive. Excuse me. This is to address the proposal to give distinct storage 100% deferral for building another storage facility at 46 Kent Road, which is an unknown floodplain. As a member of the New Milford Economic Development Commission, I vigorously and enthusiastically supported the concept of offering 100% tax deferral on building and improving properties. This was presented as a marketing tool to attract new businesses to select New Milford instead of Danbury, Brookfield, or other areas. We never imagined it would be offered to businesses with so few employees and virtually no benefit to the community. These are among the questions the town council should be asking. Will district storage proceed to build the four-story structure only if it is granted this tax incentive? Another question that should be asked is, will any business automatically get a tax deferment or abatement to major improvements? Even if there's no significant guaranteed benefit to the community, a homeowner can come to you and say, I just spent half a million dollars to build a new house. Can I have a tax deferral? I don't see much difference between a half-million-dollar mini mansion and this proposed building. And yet another question should be, is it fair to give distinct storage a 100% deferral for a new building when it will only be poaching business from other older established storage companies in New Milford? Thank you for the opportunity to share these questions.
Okay, all right. Next in line, we have Hillary Hillary Ram. So let me get you your invitation. Hillary, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, okay. My name is Hillary Ram, and I also am speaking out against the application for tax abatement for 46 Kent Road. Some things have already been said that I was going to say, so I'm going to keep it a little bit shorter. As you all know, I just ran for office, and the thing that compelled me to run for office is the fact that we, as a town, year after year, keep choosing to cut our education budget. So to look at this $295,850,000 or $59,000 annually, this tax break that we are we are voting on, you know, considering giving to this storage space is not insignificant. The ESS program at Scotticoke, this year, the cost was $58,000 to keep it going. So we really need to think in terms of what we're giving up for this $58,000 a year. Not only do we need to think about what we're giving up for these tax dollars, but we need to really consider if this application meets the criteria for deferment. I think three jobs at $50,000 that we don't even have a guarantee that there are going to be New Milford people is not is not what this is intended for. So I'm just speaking out really loudly against this. I think that there were a lot of shortcuts taken. We didn't get a balloon. I went on the zoning committee, and I really requested a balloon test so that the entire, you know, population of New Milford could see what this building was going to look like. But I think there have been a lot of shortcuts for this project. And now to see this being put forward to be on the tax deferment list is is it's it's really sort of is too much. So I'm speaking out against it, and thank you for your time.
Hillary, what's your address, please?
24 Little Bear Hill Road.
Thank you.
Okay. Our hand. All right. Next up on my list is Jeff. So Jeff, here is your invitation to unmute.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Jeff Winter, 22 Maury Road. I too am speaking regarding this tax deferral request for 46 Kent Road, but I think we should really call it for what it is. This is a tax break for Paul Zemansky, who has been a member of the town council, who is currently a member of Park and Rec, and has clearly been a political person in this town. When Paul was on the town council, he was never afraid to claim in in order to help the taxpayer to cut the education budget, to have people lose their jobs, to cut programs for including roads, bridges, what have you. This is someone who claims that they always wanted to keep taxes down. And now what do they want to do? They want the taxpayers to help fund a private venture business venture. This is wrong on so many levels. And it really it just it smacks of, you know, like a especially it's this is essentially a political giveaway. For $295,000 of deferment, this business project will very likely gain an upper hand compared to current storage facilities in the area and can use that to keep the prices down and drive other people out of business. All that is wrong. As I look at this memo from Karen Pollard, the Economic Development Director, which was put out on Friday, she claims to have done an economic impact analysis. However, that analysis is only barely given. And based on her analysis, it is so thin in terms of claiming that three jobs will be created. How do we know how many we're going to lose because other storage facilities will not have $295,000 in tax breaks? How many other jobs will we lose? And there is no guarantee that these employees, or Mr. Zemansky, for that matter, will remain a New Milford taxpayer or spend their dollars in this town. That is not how economic development is done. And I believe that the Economic Development Director knows that, but I really have, I'm not sure. Also, if she knew on December 11th, when this memo was written, that's that 200 that this tax deferment was going to take place, why did she not address it with the Economic Development Commission? The meeting minutes for that meeting with for last week on the 10th were just posted today, and it is clear that that was not discussed. So I don't know why, all of a sudden, the town council is is entertaining, giving this giant giveaway when it has not even been addressed by the Economic Development Commission. I doubt it's been addressed by the corporation. And this was only applied for within the last, like, three weeks. If you want to continue, Mr. Zemansky, knowing how the land use boards operate, has received benefits from the from zoning for they waived the traffic study. They did not do this balloon test. He has gone before other boards and commissions. So clearly, he had an intention to build this facility without this deferment. Why now should we suddenly give him a cookie or a steak or anything else? This amount of money for this project, or frankly, any economic development project, with this minimal amount of review for someone who has such a hand in local politics and is a clear donor to six of the nine members of this town council, that at a minimum, this deserves a lot more review. Thank you.
Okay, we have Ted Hine next. And your invitation is here.
Well, this is Ted Hine on 12 Wellsville Avenue in New Milford. I am speaking against the what Jeff said it was a tax break for Paul Zemansky at 46 Kent Road. I think it has been rushed. There's a lot of questions about the building itself. When we're talking about three low-skill jobs, you know, is that really what a tax abatement is supposed to be for? And 100% deferral? That's even crazier. No businessperson would even agree to that. You know, we have a town where the grand list is shrinking, and we have our own issues to deal with. It's the same thing around all the New Yorkers that moved up here. Actually, I heard that we hired a person to help go after those New Yorkers that came up here to make sure that we got the tax dollars from those New Yorkers who bought homes. I'm a homeowner, and I do not want to keep paying more taxes. And I thought it was a great thing that we hired and we spent money to get those taxes. We need to keep these taxes and not just give it away, especially to Paul Zemansky, because I believe he is just playing us all for a fool. I would like to thank the council to hear me. I would also like to thank Katie Francis, Mary Jane, Michael Gold, and Mike Noam for having their heads up and listening. And bad to Pete Bass, who just keeps looking down, and he's obviously not paying attention. Thank you very much.
All right. And last on our list, 860-355-2723. I'm going to send you an invitation to unmute, to unmute yourself. It was star six.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Adrienne Aricchio. I live at 72 Cherniski Road. I'd like to address two topics this evening. The first one is the tax deferral request for the four-story business, the storage business at 46 Kent Road. I read Ms. Pollard's letter of support, and she makes several claims about the benefits of tax deferrals. I would like to suggest that all of you read the research that is widely available and which dispels this notion that tax deferrals to business benefit the town and the taxpayers. Ms. Pollard should be prepared to prove those assertions about the economic benefits to the town, because she makes a lot of claims in her letter, which I believe was sent to the Economic Development Commission. In particular, her claim that creating new employment will pump millions of dollars from wages into the local economy is just preposterous. The business owner has already told two town commissions, wetlands and zoning, that he only intends to hire one person, even if he hired three. How would three salaries at a proposed $50,000 each pump millions of dollars from wages into the local economy? I just I have a hard time believing that. Most people making $50,000 in this town can't even afford to buy a home here, and most rent is out of reach as well. Bloomberg News reported on these tax breaks to businesses back in 2017, when President Trump decided to jump into the carrier air conditioning business debacle in Indiana. And their article was titled, "Handing Out Tax Breaks to Businesses Is Worse Than Useless." Their findings looked at research by Timothy Bartik of the Upjohn Institute for Employment Research, and I'm sure Ms. Pollard is familiar with that. His findings show that business incentives boomed in the past several decades, but instead of focusing on highly innovative, high-paying industries that create a lot of jobs, most of these tax deferrals and incentives are very poorly targeted. There's little rhyme or reason to which firms receive them. The bottom line is that states and localities are handing over money to companies in the way of deferrals and then not even following up to see if they are working or not. And if you are following up, then you should let us know that research to so we know if it's working. This ends up costing the taxpayers more money and causes suspicion of political cronyism. Number two, this will be quick. The second issue I'd like to address is the indiscriminate cutting of brush along Cherniski Road, where I live, by Public Works. Apparently, this is being done townwide, but the reasoning does not seem to be very sound. The problem with this type of cutting is that it damages the ecosystem, and it's very expensive in the long run. A better approach would save money and save the ecosystem at the same time. The beneficial plants that help the environment and local wildlife are being cut along with invasive species. And when this happens, the invasives will grow back. And when they do, they will grow back stronger, and they will crowd out the native species, which support local wildlife, birds, and the like. Furthermore, the invasives are likely to spread farther down the watercourses, because as the snowplows come through, as they will on Thursday, everything will be pushed into the adjoining wetlands and culverts and end up downstream where they will plant themselves. This is something that should come before inland wetlands and the roads committee, so a better way can be developed. How about teaching Public Works crew to recognize what invasive species look like and concentrate on removing those in a way that does not allow them to spread? This has been offered to Public Works in the past by Kathleen Nelson, a member of the Inland Wetlands Commission and a respected authority on invasive plants. You know, perhaps now is the time to ask for her help, because I can tell you, this afternoon, when I saw the young man cutting from Public Works with his big mower, I stopped and asked him if he knew what he was cutting. And he said, no, I was just told to come out here and cut everything in the town right of way. And I took a few photos of it, and I'm telling you, it looks horrible. And I can see that everything he was cutting was going right into the wetlands, right along Cherniski Road. So it's a suggestion. I hope you consider it. I hope you speak to Mr. Healy. I did email him about it. I didn't hear back, but it seems like a waste of money, short-term gain, and long-term is going to cost us a lot more. So thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Mike, do we have anybody left?
No, Pete, that does it.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to, before we move forward, I'd like to suspend the rules to add an item 3F under our consent agenda. Do you have a second? To do that?
Second.
Second from Chris. Okay, what are we going to add, Katie?
It's regard to the New Milford Sustainability Fund.
Did the motion pass? Did you vote on the motion?
Didn't vote on it yet.
Didn't vote on it because we don't know what we were putting on.
I'm sorry. It's for the Sustainability Fund. Sorry.
Thank you.
I thought you read my mind.
So we have a first and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Actually, related to the whole motion that's coming up. And I can't, I'd have to recuse myself from 3A. However, I would like the opportunity to vote on B, C, D, E, and perhaps F. So if there's no objection, if we could break it up into two parts for the consent agenda, I'd appreciate that.
Katie, can you break up the your motion?
I most certainly can.
Thank you.
So this this will be easy, David, no problem. I move to accept items, item A of the consent agenda, then agenda prior minutes.
You didn't vote on that last motion.
Oh, sorry, Stephanie.
It's okay.
So all the so all those in favor of adding the sustainability to the consent agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, so now my motion is to accept consent agenda item 3A, prior minutes.
Second.
Second from Walter. Any discussion on the consent agenda motion?
As I indicated earlier, I'll be recusing myself.
I'll I'm going to abstain as well.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And please note, Stephanie, the two abstentions.
Got them.
Okay, move to accept consent agenda items 3B through F.
Second.
Okay.
Can you just tell us what F is?
Yes, I'm going to tell you what they all are. I usually give you the little rundown. Item B, which you can see on your agenda, is the refund for the tax collector. We have refunds of 53, 36, 41. Item 3C is the New Milford Police Department. They received a donation from the Home Depot in New Milford of 52 64-ounce bottles of liquid hand sanitizer. Each bottle is worth about $12, so this is a total of about $624 donation from Home Depot. Parks and Rec received donations of $100 from La Piccolina, 75 from Housatonic Valley Insurance, 150 from Play LLC on Bank Street, and 500 from Gentile Tree Care. All of these four were for them to use for downtown holiday decorations, lamp posts, et cetera. The Parks and Rec would like to say thank you to all four of those donors. They are much appreciative. And they would like to also have the donations be put into their revenue account, 335-1000048400, which is the Parks and Rec Gift Fund.
Second.
Okay, so the next item that is item 3E, which is a youth agency, and they are going to want to accept a donation of $10,000 from an anonymous donor. It's to be used to help them create and establish therapeutic counseling services at the agency. They are asking that this donation be put in the revenue account, and that a subsequent amount of $10,000 be placed in their expense account, And our final item F, which is the New Milford Sustainability Fund, there was an expenditure of $816 made for a first responder.
Second.
Any discussion on Katie's motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Tom?
Can I can I amend my vote in the last one at 3A? I misheard the the item. I also missed that meeting, so I would like an extension on approval of prior minutes.
Stephanie, can you note Tom's abstention on 3A?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we now move to item four, which is an update from Dr. Levin.
Dr. Levin, can you give us an update?
Yes, with pleasure.
Yes.
You bet. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for having me on. We all know what's going on out there. There's enough press to talk to us about Moderna and Pfizer. So I thought we'd do that. Let's let me try and be a little helpful to everybody here. Number one, I take the vax. I've answered a lot of different questions over the last couple of weeks, and I'd like to perhaps take two or three minutes to respond to that. Vaccines are now being headed to the been sent off to the various parts of the country, and they're essentially will be distributed by the by the states themselves. So any questions regarding how that distribution should go? I think really, Mr. Mayor, it would be best if you answered that because you haven't. But I've been asked a number of questions, which are put direct, and I'm happy to answer some for anybody else who's on the phone. First question is answered. Would I personally take the vaccines that are being distributed? The answer is unequivocal, yes. And I would have my family, my my children, my wife, all have it. And I believe the work that has gone on has demonstrated, we have a lot to learn, the safety profile coupled with an efficacy profile, which is really very robust. Now, we don't know everything, that's for sure. But based on everything we've seen to date, there's sufficient evidence to say that taking this vaccine puts you at a much lower risk than contracting the disorder and dying from it. So that's number one. The two, next question is, well, tell me a little bit about why is it? Why do you feel that it's got some safety? What do we know about the safety? Is it safe for me? Well, I wouldn't be ready for my mom, who's 95, or my family, if I didn't feel that. That's number one. Number two, oh, and by myself as well, Mr. Mayor, just to be very clear, I'm not giving it to others. I wouldn't take. But number two, miles were extremely well constructed. And while they haven't yet shown the entire population, we do get a really good picture right now of the safety profile. And most certainly, we've seen a couple of things where you have people who have got a hyperallergenic. And most certainly, we've seen a couple of things where you have people who've got a hyperallergenic. You should be careful, but generally people know about that. But we will find out more and I think the setting in which the vaccine is given will give maximum protection for those who take. Another kind of question that I've had right now is sort of an interesting one. It's quite technical. Everybody knows, or if you haven't, you sure will know, the shape of this virus. There's little spikes, there's little red spikes, uh, outside what looks like a little ball. And everybody asks me, well, what's the connection between the spikes, the virus and the, uh, the vaccine? Well, it's actually those spikes. The vaccine is, uh, those spikes are really little keys. What they do is they allow the va, the virus to stick through the lining of your lung. And then they kind of unlock a protein and the virus dives into your cell and starts replicating, taking over your cell and that's it. That's how you get in there. So both Pfizer and Moderna have targeted that particular protein. And they basically make your body create antibody or react against it in a way that destroys the virus before it can actually stick to your cell and get in. Another question that's been asked of me, which is kind of interesting is, well, will it change? Will it be like flu, like next year it's another one? Well, flu and H1N1 actually had a different kind of way of working. We are kind of lucky with, not so lucky, but we happen to be fortunate that the two, uh, that, uh, that COVID nineteen is not a shapeshifter. You know what I mean by shapeshifter? Basically it can change its whole coat and suddenly you've got, it disguises itself. Flu is like that. Flu is able to shapeshift. It changes the proteins on the surface and so every year a new guy comes back and you have to start from zero. In the case of COVID nineteen, we don't know why. Those little red spikes don't seem to change very much. And they do change a little bit, but when we do, for example, there's a new variant coming up in Scotland with about a thousand cases. But it doesn't seem to be changing in a bad way or it just seems to be the same level of dangerousness as the prior one. So it may, what that really translates into is that number one, if there are there, it's not nearly as, uh, shape shifting as flu or it appears that way. And more importantly, if there are new variants, what we've learned about the way to make the vaccine with the mRNA, I think I've mentioned to you before, you can go from a standing start now and see whether you've got a new vaccine. So that's really encouraging. So I'll stop there, uh, but bottom line is it's now all about the rollout. It's about people getting knowledgeable about how the safety profile and it's about us manufacturing enough to get to everybody and that is going to happen. Uh, there may be a few spluttering stuff. We saw the amazing work out of Michigan yesterday. I was glued to TV. Um, one item about that that you should note, I've spent a lot of time in manufacturing plants and you saw a lot of people in yellow work clothes packing boxes. That is not, that tells you right there that we're, we're only at the beginning of the production because when you get production rolling, it manufactures, those boxes are packed automatically. And this thing will start rolling a lot faster, uh, as we, as we gain ground and understand how to get it out to people. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for you this evening, but I'm happy to take any questions from anybody.
Thank you, Dr. Levin. Any questions for Dr. Levin?
Yeah, I have, I have one, but.
Good, Michael.
Thanks, Dr. Levin. It's Michael Gold. Uh, we always appreciate you coming to the council and giving us an update. Two things, do you see that, uh, the general public will be able to get the vaccine by, let's say, April? And what can the general public do, uh, to protect themselves until that time from the COVID?
Well, really good question. I don't think by April, we're going to have it in the general public. I think the first two tiers sure will have got it. Uh, the depend, the, the, the big word depends here is how rapidly the manufacturer up with the numbers of people who need it. Now, the other side is who's going to take it? There's a pro and a con here. We have so much suspicion in the, in the, at this stage. But my biggest concern is that, you know, not everybody will take it. So that may mean that we have a tremendous supply, which will then be available for those who will take it. But I think we should be cautious about any statements about the general public getting it by April. Uh, Dr. Salui says that he's confident by the end of April, the population will be getting large shipments. And I, I believe it, but it won't be the beginning of April, that's for sure.
Chris?
Um, yeah, thank you, uh, Dr. Levin for, for coming here and spending some time with us. Um, one question on, uh, both efficacy. Uh, my understanding is the Pfizer vaccine will be fully effective three weeks after the second dose. Is that right?
No, they both actually have two doses. So, uh, there's no, there's no, we have good evidence that the first dose already imparts a certain degree of resistance and that's what you'd expect. And then shortly after the second dose, which is exactly as you described, that's when the maximum, uh, kicks in. And it's a pretty classical vaccine raging, by the way. Kind of very similar to Shingex for shingles, where you get two shots and they hurt like heck, by the way.
Just had, just had mine this year.
Oh, yeah. Tell me about it, right?
Not fun.
Oh, no. But the good news is no shingles. Um, that's ninety-five, that's the same thing. It's ninety-five percent effective. Um, the only advantage I ever saw of that besides having shingles was that my one arm looked like I was Superman.
Uh, the, the other question on efficacy, I, I've heard, um, some experts saying that it may only maintain its effectiveness for four to six months. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think we need to wait. I think there's too much, too many experts opining on too many things at this stage.
Right.
Well, the facts that we know, ninety-five percent effective. We know that there are side effects from this. We know that you have pain in the arm. We know that you get fever. We know that people who have, well, hyperimmune appear that we've heard a couple of cases which indicate that, that we know. And so the safety profile is good for a ninety-five percent efficacy. What we don't know is all of these assertions of how long it will last afterwards. Going on, you know, Shingex is, you, you do Shingex and you got it for a long time. So I, I kind of want to wait to see the facts.
Good. And last question is, obviously, and, and deservedly so, Pfizer and Moderna have gotten a lot of press. Is there anybody else close to, uh, approval?
Oh, excellent. I, I did circulate a presentation which pleased that the mayor should feel free to circulate to you. There are actually a hundred and sixty different vaccines being developed. And so it's not so much, uh, that, there, there's several others which will roll out for sure over the next couple of months. And I think we're at least three other types of vaccine will come forward. And amongst which, you know, it's very powerful companies are developing them like J and J. J and J is focused more on a single shot than anything else. Little disappointed on, uh, where we are right now with, uh, GSK and Sanofi. That doesn't. But, uh, there is enough now for us to know that there at least are likely to roll out. And please, uh, Mr. Mayor, if anybody should ask that presentation, please kindly pass it out. It's a pretty straightforward, uh.
We, we sent that, Dr. Levin, we sent that to the town council.
Yeah, we have it. And I want to thank you for that. It was excellent information. Thank you.
You're most welcome. So you have, in, in summary, then you'll see in that presentation, you've got at least, uh, two, four, six, eight, you got at least ten which are finishing off phase three, uh, of which four done. So we're, we're in good shape for getting some of them. The one I wouldn't touch with a barge pole is the one that comes out of Russia. That's one I'm not, I'm not recommending.
Mary Jane?
Oh, thank you. Um, Dr. Levin, um, I know I'd asked you about children the last time about, um, you know, what ages might be avail, the vaccine might be available for. Um, and I know now they're talking about sixteen and over, um, but do we have any idea about kids younger than that?
Mary Jane, you asked me that before, I went and looked. Uh, so the bottom line is they're now testing it on five to twelve-year-olds.
Okay.
My guess is we'll be getting, that, now that's actually a pretty good indicator that the, uh, the safety profile is good because nobody's going to allow you to try it on the little guys unless you have a good safety profile. And the best as I can see now is that we need to wait for those results. Um, but the better news is on those little guys is that they, they don't tend to be suffering anything like the depredations that, uh, people of my age group are in fact. But we will have, by the way, I believe we'll have those results within a month.
Oh, that's great. Um, that's wonderful. Um, the other thing I just wanted to say is I am so grateful for all these scientists and researchers and doctors and everybody else that's so involved in this process. I mean, this is why, this is why education is so important, even in our community. We just don't know at which family or which town these future researchers are coming from and why it's so important to invest in education in our town because these are our future scientists that are saving the world right now. These, these people that, you know, went to school and studied and worked really hard, came out of all communities across America and it's just so critical that we keep up, you know, our good education and support it all the way. So, and thank you for all you've done and for all your information that you've given to the town too.
Mary Jane, can I just, uh, Mr. Mayor, can I just add something there?
Absolutely.
It's, you, you've put your finger in the real core asset, the real, the strength of our nation, of our town is in our education. It's not just in the biological sciences. Remember I said we saw in Michigan, all these people packing boxes? Well, one of the great things is the kids are going to engineering to figure out how you can automate that, how you can bring automated, highly terrific plant into the United States. I, I'm obviously a biology geek, a doctor, and I, I love medicine and I love biology. But every time I think about a manufacturing plant, I am constantly stunned by the extraordinary science that engineers bring to the table. You know, the more we can get the kids educated to believe in science, to believe all aspects of science, the better we're all going to be.
I agree a hundred percent. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Dr. Levin, thank you for all the information. You're, uh, always a treasurer of wealth here, uh, of knowledge for us. My question to you is, while people are waiting for these, um, these vaccines, you see our cases obviously arising, more people are getting tested. Um, what are some of the current therapeutics being issued out that are helping people and right now to overcome this? You know, I, I, family members, uh, in-laws that just got it down in Florida, they've been put on erythromycin, heavy antibiotics. They seem to be coming through this pretty well. What are some of the things that are, that people maybe who didn't get such a big dose? And these are folks that were very, very careful, you know, wearing masks, washing gloves, maybe got a very small viral load. Um, what are some folks using now or what, what can some of our, our people who are watching, uh, who may get it? What, what can they count on getting when they, uh, when they get treated currently? Until, until this vaccine comes and protects them.
So I, I think the first thing your parents were doing, which was exactly the right thing, which was doing masks and keeping social distancing. It's unfortunate that they got this. The next thing is that, you know, if you've got the ability to be vaccinated against pneumonias, that's something that's preemptively you might consider doing as something which allows you to prevent some, something untoward. You won't get an added pneumonia across that. There is zero evidence to date, unfortunately, that hydroxychloroquine or any of the other drugs that are being used normally for antibacterials will attack the viruses. Yeah. There's, there's a limited amount of evidence that even the one that gave a lot of hope early on from, uh, from Gilead, uh, that up two has got an effect, but it's really once you're in hospital, it seems to be getting out of hospital faster. So the bottom line here is for the, the people at home to get this. It is rest, hydration and keeping the temperature down. That, those are the things people are doing, making sure that you can avoid spreading it. That's great. If you can't and you go into hospital, what they're getting is they're getting steroids. Now the steroids are working. And the other thing is about that is if you're running into any difficulty, any respiratory difficulty, it is better not to toughen. Better to find your way to that hospital sooner rather than later.
Thank you, doctor.
Great. We have to, you know, it's, it's a little bit in our hands now to keep that social distancing and masking. But this, this will go away and, uh, we, it will be beaten and we've only got a couple of months. We've lasted now eleven months with nothing. Now we've just got that last, that last quarter, we've got to win.
Yeah, unfortunately, some people are catching it even while being protected. Luckily, many of, that I've heard are getting smaller viral loads and they're taking, they're being prescribed antibiotics and things to keep the infection out of their lungs, which is giving them, you know, helping them, uh, fight this virus. Um, you know, at home, most of the time. So thank you so much, doctor. Appreciate it.
It's a pleasure. They're doing good. And I think, you know, the ones who, as you rightly point out, the level of testing has gone up. We're finding a lot more people, significant number of whom are asymptomatic, but that's still, you know, the gravestones are mounting. We, you know, we're, it doesn't matter the ones, what matters are those who are ill.
Right. Thank you so much.
Mike Nail?
Yeah, real quick. Um, I had, before Thanksgiving, I had COVID. So I'm just wondering, and I, I've asked it before and I don't know if more information's come out, but people have had COVID, let's say in the, the second wave. So they're, and it's just before the, the winter. I'm assuming that it doesn't make sense for me to, me to get this vaccine until summertime or somewhere around then. Or is, is it, are they still going to have some people in the, you know, the older groups get it even though you don't, they've had it before?
Mike, it's my betting they're going to have the older groups COVID as well. It's, uh, they've gone through a period, you've been infected, you have antibodies. Question is, what level are you there?
Right.
Uh, that's really the key question, which a lot of this is, again, I said earlier, and don't listen to any experts because there are none.
Yeah.
Really need to, where, where you have to base your decisions on is what data do we have on this? Only data is we know people can get it again.
Yeah. The other thing, the other question I have is during the testing, were they testing people that were immune compromised and the older? I mean, because I'm, that's the nerve, that's the worry I have because it does, you know, it does beat you up for a few days. If someone is really fragile, could that put them over to the edge or no?
Uh, they, they did do a, quite a variety of different people. Um, you know, by the, one of the, one of the clocks that tick all of us is the immune system. It's like a, it's a ticking, it just winds itself down. So there's some of the old, by their very nature, they are already immunocompromised. And so the very fact that you're able to, what's really encouraging is that these older patients are able to raise antibodies and raise T and B cell responses. So I've not yet seen anything that says the immunocompromised of, of age are a problem. What I haven't seen any data on, for example, people who've had a, uh, who have cancer and maybe under immune aggression or cancer, that's a subset. I'm sorry, I don't have the information on, but I'll go and take a look, see on. Those are people who, you know, that are about to get a transplant for their, uh, or their, uh, marrow transplant, something like that. Uh, these people I don't know. I truly don't know. The one good thing about this vaccine though, just so you know, is that unlike other vaccines, which are so-called attenuated types of vaccines, the virus, it doesn't, that is basically, they say, won't infect you. You cannot give the virus those kind of attenuated vac, uh, vaccine. Because those vaccines suddenly go crazy. These do not. These are really very specific. They'll find themselves in the right cell. They'll see that the white cell will react against it. So I'm encouraged by this, this, the nature of this technology because it leads me to believe that when they because it leads me to believe that when they do test it on these, really the kinds that you're talking about, the kind of individuals who substantially immune, you know, immunocompromised, I, I believe there's a much better chance of effect. But again, you know, this, we need to see the data and this rock hard data is all that you should count on here.
Thank you, Dr. Levin. Any other questions? Mary Jane?
The only thing I'd like to say is that Tommy, we were talking about, I think it's your in-laws and wearing masks. What that research is showing now is that if you are wearing masks and you are exposed to COVID, that it does cut down on the viral load. And therefore you may have a milder case of COVID. So, I mean, wearing a mask is so critical. So, you know, hopefully it will avoid you getting it, but if you do get it, it hopefully will cut down. Because a lot of it is about the viral load.
Right, right, right. I mean, and that's why, I mean, the people that I've seen, like New York and other parts of the country that are friends that have gotten it, have been wearing masks, they've been wearing gloves, you know, they're, they're bathing in, in disinfectant. And they got it, but they got a very small viral load, so their immune system was able to, to fight it, you know? I mean, it's, it was terrible, but you know, they were still protected. They got a very small dose.
The masks are definitely working.
Yeah.
Like, it's such a simple thing to do.
If you think about smoke inhalation.
Right.
You go into a, in a room of smoke, you have just a little sniff of it, you're gonna get out of that room. You go in there and you stay a long time, you're gonna get really sick.
We had enough evidence of secondhand smoke for the last fifty years to know. You know, just look at your breath at this time of the year.
Yep.
Pretty clear.
Doug?
Dr. Levin, thank you again for all the information. I'll just play a little devil's advocate here. Obviously, being a scientist and you as well as other ones, you have to predict the unknown, which is obviously like an oxymoron. But my, my question to you is that this is a new drug and that if we do happen to have some side effects, have you guys had like a plan B if the side effects are, where they have to stop doing the vaccine?
What a great question. Yeah, that's actually not a, this is not a devil's advocate. I think it's an incredibly important strategic question for how you deal with it. Number one, nobody has ever dealt with one in this country. Number two, what, what gives us any predictability from this? Very little. We, bottom line is we need to, we need to watch the data, we need to watch the safety profiles and by golly, all we're going on is some very good data now, which gives us encouragement. But number three, to your question, what is the backup? What's plan B? Well, plan B actually started on the same day as everything else. There are six different types of vaccine. So if at, by some remarkable occurrence that the first, the mRNA ones do not work, there's great reason to believe that is the ones behind will. And the reason to believe is the following. That spike that I mentioned before is clearly raising antibodies. So the question is now, how would you attack it in any way? And you've got four other tried and tested methodologies for doing that. They're a little slower in getting their trials run, but they will get them run. And then behind that, we have a host of others coming up who are not that far behind. And then in addition to that, which is, I think, really even more encouraging is, you know, Jane said it, America really put its foot on the, on the, put the pedal to the metal here. You've got a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty new antiviral. These are, these are pills that are under development. We haven't even talked about those. Those actually go for and kill the virus. They don't raise an anti, antibody reaction. They are not that far behind. They are gonna roll out next year, one after the other, and they're looking extremely interesting as well. So I think, you know, there's, we haven't just brought two guns to the table here, to the fight. There are others behind. It will say that, boy, it would be super disappointing. But there is, I think there's strategic depth in the product pipeline to accommodate for it.
Well, I thank you. I, obviously this isn't gonna be a flip of the switch. This is gonna take some time and I hope, you know, I hear some people with a false sense of security, like this is gonna be over by April, May. This could go on. There might be some hotspots throughout the United States well into, you know, later part of this year or next.
But I, you, again, the whole, you know, again, I repeat for the third but unless they, we've not experienced this. I think the greatest danger though, to your point, the greatest danger we face is the skepticism of those who just won't take the virus. Unless we, unless we get to that seventy percent, we're gonna have these hotspots everywhere. Once we get to that seventy percent, we will crush this. But we've got to educate people. We've got to get on the phone, talk to our relatives all around the country and say, let's be real here.
Well, that's the magic number, seventy percent that you guys are.
That's roughly it. It's a, you know, you can, it's a sixty to seventy percent. The way it works is if you've got a crowd of people standing around you, you wanna know that there are five people around you, all five of them will not be able to transmit because they're immune. So you can, you can have the disease, but they won't pass it. And if you have one of those five people who can be infected, they can then go on and infect everybody else. So you gotta get to seventy percent.
Thank you for your time, Dr. Levin. Appreciate it.
It's a real pleasure.
Any other questions for Dr. Levin? Thank you, Dr. Levin, as always, for the very informational to our town council and to our public. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thanks. Okay, moving on, item five, I move that we accept the following appointments. The Long Term Recovery Committee, which is a temporary committee, adding the following, Dr. Thomas Scavation in the hospital, James Furlough, emergency management, Denise Del Mastro, Chamber of Commerce, Alicia DeCorpo, Board of Ed, and Mike Nayom, local business person, all on the term of December fourteenth, twenty twenty to April twenty fifth of twenty twenty one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Pete, I just want to make a comment. I just, I looked at the list and I talked to, to the mayor about it and I just didn't see any, anyone there representing small business. And I say representing, actually having a small business that's suffering like I, you know, I am with Health Club. I'm, I'm blessed that I have another business that's doing well. And luckily I can, I, you know, my family's fine. But I understand what these businesses are going through and I just want to be part of this committee to give them a, a better voice than just being represented, knowing what it's like in the trenches. It's, it's just, it's sickening to me how some of these businesses are suffering. You know, you go into a restaurant, there's, there's nobody in there and, you know, you know, it, it, it's just tough. And I, I hope a lot of people buy gift certificates this winter for gifts because it, they really do need it.
So we have a motion in a second.
Yeah, I had a quick question. So what's their, the main charge of this committee? Like, what is it they're going to do?
So the main charge of this committee, and this is something that's required by the State Department of Homeland Security, is to come up with a long-term strategy, especially for those with unmet needs about how the town, the cap, the, the region, we're in Demos Five, and then the state all comes together to create a, a vision, so to speak, for not only the town, but the region and then the state. So all this information that we're gonna be compiling and Dr. Levin is the chairman of this committee, will then bring that up to Region Five and then Region Five will bring it up to the state.
Okay, well, I think Mike just said it all in his previous statement and I guess my question is this, can't we send this information up earlier than waiting? Because there are things that we do know. And, and Mike just said, you know, our small businesses, they don't need help three months from now. They need it now.
Absolutely. So the state has been working on that with their Department of Economic Development. And that's, they've been working on trying to get additional funding. They've done grant programs for small businesses. They continue to try and get more money, but the problem is, is we all know the state itself is broke and they're trying to wait for the money to come from the federal government. Hopefully we can get that money from the federal government, but it's kind of waiting for them to then, as they did in the beginning, to give the money to the states. So that's what we're waiting for.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. You know, Pete, just a, a point to David Lawson, though, I think we're, we're using the word government too much and state too much. We have, as a community, we have people, members in this community that, that through this pandemic are doing well and we have members that aren't, and we need to create some way to get the members that are doing well to help the members that aren't, but have a very clear, you know, way of doing it. And, and I know Chris has thought something like that, but I think, I think what needs to be done is, is shown, is, is create a system where it's, people that, that can donate the money know exactly how it's helping everybody. And it, it's some, I mean, it's gonna take time to do something like that and, and, you know, we need to get on the other end of this, but it's just, you know, we can't always think government's gonna help us. And, you know, I'm hoping that this group isn't, isn't just looking for what the state's gonna hand out and we can actually look to help ourselves.
Mike, I just want to say something. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have gone out from donors to, across our state, to nonprofits. I can speak for United Way because we did several hundred thousand dollars worth of donations in our area and the Alice Fund across the state. So it's not just the government and this, this particular long-term recovery, every town, and there's a hundred and sixty-nine towns are charged with putting this together and the, it's March that the beginning, we have some things that we have to have done and, and set in place by March. But it's, it's really not about the government doing everything. It's actually sort of the opposite of that. How to handle it because the government has been stretched like everything, everyone else. I can just talk for in Milford because we all understand that. So it's really a way to find out what are the really unmet needs and what do we have in our toolkit, so to speak, that we could do here and then look at it, extrapolate it out, you know, like any business person would. What can you handle today? What do you need to handle the next and the next and the next? And then go forward because nobody knows exactly. But I do want you to know that in our town alone, there have been many, many, many private donors, people you don't know, people you do know. But it's made from five dollar donations up to five digits and more. So I, I think we're very lucky in our town. I know some that are not. I just, so you know that. And it, it's not fixing everything, but it's fixing what can be fixed.
But I don't think, you know, I just don't think you, that people truly understand how much these companies are hurting. I, I just, I know firsthand that, you know, the, the numbers that you're saying is a drop in the bucket to some of these companies. And I just want, people need to understand.
These aren't companies, Mike. I don't want to mislead you. This is helping people.
Katie, I'm just saying that, that, the, the point I'm trying to get is people got to understand how hurt these places are and they're just trying to get by. They're going into debt, they're, they're going into savings and their retirements just to keep the business afloat. And, and that's all I'm trying to get.
And no, I understand that because what I'm talking about isn't to help businesses. What we've done and other nonprofits and other people is to reach out and help the people who work for those businesses who have lost their income or almost lost all their income, who are now in danger of losing their home, who have no place to put their children when they're not in school. So I know exactly what you're saying about businesses, but I want just to make sure that you and others understand that the offshoot of, of people like yourself who have had issues because of the virus and your business isn't doing as well, that all the people that you employed, all the people that were employed by your service companies, everything right down the line, just like a restaurant. So they, that's part of, that's the unmet need, that part of the unmet need that I just want to be sure you understand that it definitely, there are people, we, we don't wait just for the government. When there are people starving, we don't wait for the government.
I understand your point. I'm not saying that the town's not doing, trying to do.
Nothing to do with the town. I'm talking about people like you, me and everybody else. That's all. I just, just wanted to let you know that.
If you're, if you're helping the people, is, it's great for a temporary thing, but long-term, we gotta figure out how these businesses can survive because if you don't have jobs, you don't have a town. But, you know, I don't want to keep going on. That's what we have a committee for.
That'll come later, Mike.
That will. Okay, so did we vote on that motion?
Motion in a second. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
And the sec, the second part of this is a, for the Conservation Commission, I move to accept Andrew McPhee as an alternate, filling the vacancy. That is a term of December fourteenth through November thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. This is Conservation Commission.
And we have a second from Walter and this is filling the seat of Michael John Cavallaro. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Item number six, move to accept a grant of ten thousand two hundred and seventy dollars from Tech and Civic Life, CTCL, which would be used by the Registrar's Office to conduct safe and accessible elections. I believe Tammy or Mayor, you can speak to that.
So this was money that was given to our, our registrar's and this is to help with the way that we've been conducting our elections, especially this last time around. It's been very useful for them. And that stuff they can use for additional mailings, additional machinery that they need and also additional labor. Your second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hang on.
Aye.
Aye.
I had a question.
Well, it, it, again, as regards to grants, I don't know if Tammy's there or not, but what's going on with these two sidewalk grants? Are they going to expire and we're just not gonna do anything or?
What can we, can we vote on this first, David? Answer for you.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And then David, answer your question real quick. That's going through with Beta, which is our consultant and DPW, as they're finalizing the engineering. As you know, we had our public caring. Then we had our comment. Hopefully we'll, the engineers will be out to design the, validate the areas of the sidewalks that were brought forth and hopefully we can start construction either very late spring or early summer.
Now, does that include the Pettit Run project?
Includes all of it, correct.
Okay, could we be updated on that on a periodic basis?
Absolutely.
Please, I mean, it's, it seems to be, you know, going down the sidewalk, but thank you very much for answering.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mayor's remarks, item seven.
All right. So just real quick for everybody, the COVID numbers that came out today. And as we've talked about at each one of our meetings, these numbers are combined totals since March of when they started the number. So no ways is how many people are currently confirmed COVID, but this is a running total. So the state of Connecticut is a hundred and forty-four thousand, seven ninety-three. Litchfield County is at five thousand, six hundred and sixty-three, which was up two hundred and fifty-three from Friday. Hospitalizations are now at twenty-nine, which is up five from Friday. New Milford is, is at eight eighty-seven, which was up thirty from Friday. And as we talked about a little bit earlier this evening, we're asking all of our citizens to continue to please wear a mask, keep your six, social distancing and use the hand hiding, hand hygiene protocols, which means if you are near a water source or a spigot, please use as hot a water as you can for a minimum of twenty seconds underneath the spigot. That you get soap underneath your fingernails and up to your wrists. If you don't have that availability, please use hand sanitizer. If you're an elderly person or a person with underlying conditions, example, diabetes, pulmonary or heart conditions, please only go out if you absolutely have to. If you're exhibiting any symptoms of COVID nineteen, please do not go to work, school. If your symptoms do continue, please contact your primary doctor and please get tested. It's very important, not only for yourself, but your, for your family and for the community. Also, please, as we've talked about before, if you get a chance throughout the week, please check on your elderly family and friends. I'm sure they want to hear from you and plus it's a great opportunity as if they do need something, you can help or fellow citizen. As far as the COVID vaccine distribution update, Connecticut placed its first order for thirty-one thousand, two hundred vaccines on Friday, December fourth, and the state anticipates deliveries to And the state anticipates deliveries to hospitals starting as soon as, as it was today. Some, they did receive some. Uh, long-term care facilities, uh, across Connecticut have agreements with Walgreens and CVS. Here in New Milford, our long-term care facilities are going to be, uh, worked by with CVS for vaccine administration and distribution. And that's set to begin on Monday, December 21st. Um, as soon as I receive more information from the state, I'll pass that on to the council and also to the public. Uh, during the course of December and partnering with the state of Connecticut, the town had three additional COVID testing done by the state, two written in Milford High School, one was at John Pettibone. Very well attended. Uh, we can't thank the residents and those that, and can't thank the state enough for partnering with us to do this testing. I've asked the state if we could do additional testing after the first of the year, especially for our teachers and students. It will be on break, uh, to see if we can help them, uh, as we did before with testing. We've also been working with the VNA, who's been doing testing for our town employees as we continue to go through this COVID testing. So thank you to the VNA. I'd also like to wish those of our Jewish community a happy and blessed Hanukkah. Uh, also thank you to the Charles Merriman Society, which is Carr and the Roger Sherman Daughters of the American Revolution and the United Way, who packed 220 gift bags with PJs and a book for New Milford Social Services to buy, to provide the Sweet Dreams, uh, Community Project. I can't thank them enough for that. Also like to thank our VFW Commander Jim Delancy, American Legion Commander McBreity for the Pearl Harbor Ceremony that we had on December seventh. Thank you to Pat McGuire for the bagpipes, Buck and Tina Ovett for the National Anthem, State Representative Buckby, uh, Chief Sarudo and myself. We all, uh, were allowed to give a little speech in honor of those that served. Uh, also, uh, like to thank, um, the Galveston Fire Department for their ham dinner and everyone that supported the Galveston Fire Department. We all know we have a volunteer fire department. And it's very important that we all, when we can, get out and help our volunteer fire departments, as well as our New Milford ambulance and all the volunteers that help this one town. Also like to thank Ivana, uh, Butera and all the volunteers who continue to run the Santa Fund, which has been, which they've been doing for over 40 years, which helped hundreds of local children each year. Can't thank them enough. They've done the first round of the Santa Fund. And I cannot thank the New Milford Police Department and Odd Fellows for their toy drives, which were a tremendous success this year, which goes, which is going to allow Ivana and her crew to do another round of toy drive for those citizens in need. So thank you to everyone that donated. Thank you to our social services, our New Milford PD and, uh, Odd Fellows for their hard work. Also like to thank Water Witch, Sean Delancy, Chief Squatters and the entire Water Witch Fire Department for the wonderful parade of lights that we had. Um, it was great to see, uh, all the people socially distanced in their cars, uh, out waving as the parade of lights went through. It was a wonderful, uh, thing for our town. Uh, got the kids to get out and see some, see some wonderful lights. And thank you to everyone that was in the parade that put lights on their vehicles. Thank you very much for that. Also thank you to our parking rack, DPW, New Milford Garden Club, United Methodist Men's Club, The Peace Family, this year's Lights and Trees, a deck and that decorate the downtown, including the bandstand and the downtown planters. It's beautiful for those that haven't been downtown to come out and see it, especially, uh, when we get to snow. It's going to be absolutely, uh, wonderful. So thank you for everybody's endeavors with that. Uh, also for those, uh, with, uh, the weather going to be, uh, a very snowy one that was being forecast. DPW again this year has opened up the free sand pile at Public Works. It's right in the front, uh, by the, uh, northern part of the building there. You can see it. So that's for New Milford residents only. We do have cameras there to make sure that, that people are compliant. If you do need to get some sand for your walkway, please come down and do that. Also, uh, Don Clady's doing his toy drive, uh, this whole week. Uh, John Pettibone, uh, please, if you have some toys, like to donate to Don's, Don's, uh, uh, toy drive. Uh, he does that not only in New Milford, but in some other areas, and he helps also our veterans, uh, both with, uh, foodstuffs. So if you have some extra, uh, food supplies, to like to donate to Don and his crew. He's been doing that for many years. So thank you to Don and, uh, his, uh, efforts in helping out our veterans and, uh, children, uh, in need as well. Also like to thank Don Hammacott and the, uh, Blythe Roberts and Jason Weller as they have prepared with the Culinary School, uh, in November, 2,605 meals in November for their senior center in the Food Bank. And they've done over 19,000 meals since mid-March. So that's an amazing achievement, uh, to give to, uh, those in need and can't thank the Culinary School for their partnership uh, in doing that for those in need. So thank you. Uh, we've completed our road project for this year. Uh, and, uh, roads that we completed this year were McNulty, Polaris, Warwick, Daly, Short, Forest, Gretel, Mist Hill Eagle, Carman Hill, one and two, Grandview, Wampum, Indian Ridge, Arrowhead, Long Mountain Road, Elm Street Extension, uh, Gardan, Geiger, Orchard Heights. We also did the police, um, driveway as well. Um, we continue to work on Brentwood, uh, and Cobbler with drainage, uh, Hickock and Crossbrook. Uh, we've just about completed in doing all those. That's about 28 miles of road that we did this year. Thank you to our DPW team. Thank you to our contractors. Uh, we're, we're going to be looking to start, uh, the next year of road projects, which begin April 1st. And those beginning roads are going to be Burnham, Dorset, Popular Street Two, Brentwood Cobbler, which will complete Charter House and West Street. And we'll have more information, uh, uh, in January on those as well. Our library construction continues to move forward. Uh, we have Steve Vasquez, uh, who's our clerk of the works, and we continue to work on an 18-month project. Uh, so thank you to Steve, our contractor, and our library construction, uh, committee, uh, for all their hard work as we continue to move that project forward. Also, uh, with our municipal building committee, we continue to work on the roofs, which are going to be for town hall. We're waiting for the shipper grant of a hundred thousand dollars to come in. And we're going to put it out to bid. Uh, we'll be looking to put the bid out in January for the New Milford High School roof, which will be a tin roof. And we're currently working, uh, on the bid specs for the Serenoble Oil Tank. So I like to thank the municipal building committees. They continue to work forward through all that. Also today we had our opioid task force. I like to thank, uh, all of our task force members as we continue to work, uh, on that. Uh, also I'd like to thank Jason O'Connor and also like to thank, um, Laura Murphy. Uh, also Alicia DeCorpo and the social, social workers at the, uh, high school and also at Scotticoke as we begin to work on trying to create new opportunities to help our teens that currently are going through mental health crises and depression due to COVID-19. I'll have more information, uh, at our first meeting in our town council as we're continuing to come up with some solutions and some opportunities, uh, to address this. So thank you, everyone that's working on that. Also like to welcome some of our new businesses into town. Uh, Murphy's Tire's been here forever, but we have new owners, which are Beth and Jeff. We wish them much success, uh, in their endeavors. Also like to thank Nutmeg Games, uh, which is in the, uh, Stop and Shop Plaza. And for those that like role-playing games and different types of games, they have a wonderful assortment there. So I'd like to thank them for opening up in New Milford. And also B and D Provisions, which is right here next to Domino's. Uh, we had the open, uh, the grand opening this past Saturday, which was well received. If you get a chance to visit, uh, the Clark, uh, family, that would be wonderful as well. Also Reeves Across America is this Saturday. And that's reeves that we place on veterans, uh, that have passed on their gravestones. Uh, and that will be this Saturday. Uh, the first one is at Saint Francis Xavier Cemetery. That's at 12 noon, but we'd like for you to get there about 11:45 if you can. We practicing social distancing and please wear masks. And also Center Cemetery will also be doing the same, uh, putting on, uh, I believe five or seven wreaths over there as well. So please, if you get a chance, come to the ceremony. It's a wonderful ceremony, uh, to honor those that have fallen. Like to thank Katie, uh, for putting it on at the Saint Francis, uh, Xavier Cemetery. Uh, and it's just a wonderful tribute to our veterans. And that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, we have number, item number eight is an update from our finance director, Greg Ospow. Is he still with us?
Do we want to do, do we want to do the, uh?
We have A to D.
The A through D, Katie?
I'm sorry.
Do we want to do A to D first under seven?
Oh, I thought you just did that. I'm sorry. Are you done? I'm sorry. You're done with your, okay. All right. So the only one that really requires, uh, I'm sorry, action here. So I'll make a motion, uh, to, uh, approve formation of a temporary Greenway Committee.
I have a second. Uh, basically what the, uh, mission of this Greenway, uh, committee, uh, it's to, uh, continue the work of the Bike and River Trail Committee, uh, that was started, uh, several years ago. And, uh, the mission for this is the New Milford River Greenway is an iconic 13-mile landscape that connects the Galveston area of New Milford along with the Houston River to the Brookfield border. The Greenway promotes a healthy and sustainable relationship between the people and the land by holistically balancing built and natural environments. The Greenway landscape provides places for nature and wildlife, for culture and tradition, for outdoor recreation and education, for working forests and parks while embracing vibrant urban areas. The Greenway is valued by a broad cross-section of the society, working together as an effective committee to enhance and strategize its heritage for future generations. The charge of this committee will be to continue the work of the former New Milford Bike and River Trail Committee and have public input with the planning of a multi-use trail from Galveston area of New Milford to the border of New Milford and Brookfield, including projected costs associated with the project, phases of implementation and grant opportunities. The committee will consist of five members and will report to the council with quarterly updates. I have a first and I have a second. Any discussion?
Yeah. So this is replacing another committee? Is that what I'm hearing?
The Bike and River Trail Committee has been, has not been informed. It's expired.
It's expired. And why is that not being renewed?
It's the same thing. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
I'll be abstaining. There's not enough information there for me to make a decision.
You got it. Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Um, item seven B, um, isn't really a voting item. It's just to, uh, make an, I guess, Pete, if you want to do a vote on it, I'll move that you, uh, accept that New Milford is becoming a recovery-friendly town. It's a designation, um, for towns who are just that, recovery-friendly. You know, we have New Milford, uh, can the Former Substance Abuse Prevention Council and along with our Western Connecticut Coalition, uh, we actually have, without really having to do too much, we meet all the criteria, basically be, because we have Justin Colmer, who's our community care person. He is first of his kind around. But it just means that we have, uh, sober homes. We have resources that can help people, uh, when they either overdose after they leave the hospital. Uh, it makes sure that we have a council such as our substance abuse prevention that we are up on, uh, making sure people are trained on Narcan and other things that are needed. There's a, a mental health, uh, component. So basically covers just about anything you can think of that, um, we are making a page for their town website. There's, there's a link there now, but it's to, to help people find immediate answer when they need something so that they're not, whether you're the user, the, the actual abuser, or whether you're a parent or friend or relative, so that you don't waste time and, and your own being in angst about it, uh, easily find people to help you. So it's, um, it's a growing trend and New Milford is on that wagon. Danbury is also, uh, a recovery-friendly, uh, community. You can look that on their website and see what we'll be having. So it's great. The mayor, Justin Colmer and myself, um, all thought it was great and it is.
Any discussion on Katie's motion?
I just think, um, is there a better title for this? Like?
That's the title from the coalition, Mary Jane. We didn't make it up. We could talk about it at the meeting on, on Thursday. I'll, I'll show you. That's, that's there. It's just, you know, non-threatening, I think, covers everything.
Yeah, I agree, but it's also kind of nondescript to act. Actually, I have to tell you, when I first looked at it, I was like, I wasn't even sure what you were going to talk about.
Right.
And I'm on the can. And so like, I, I just thought it was just kind of, I just don't know that everybody will get that.
Right. Well, we could talk about it. I'm, I'm sure we could probably change it. I, I don't know that there's a, there's no regulation. It's just, this is how the coalition has it set up. So sure, let's talk about it on Thursday. How's that? Great. Okay.
So mo- motion in a second. Walter seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Katie.
Okay. Item seven C, uh, move to transfer funds in the amount of $80,166.87 from recycling account, 43011043010251000 to the New Milford Public Works Personnel Grades Account, which is 43011043010051014.
Thank you, Walter. And this is, as we talked about, when we privatized, uh, recycling, had the management company come in, those three, um, workers have now moved over to DPW. And we're just moving the, uh, the personnel line from, uh, the recycling to the DPW line. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay. Item seven D, uh, move to appropriate $110,000 from our COVID account, number 1041090059029000 to the New Milford Community Ambulance Account, number 42401042400053004 due to COVID.
Thank you. And, uh, Mike, could you open up the lines for, uh, Jonathan Basely, Donna Hespe and Jack Oxton from New Milford Ambulance?
Uh, Ja, I got Jonathan Basely, Jack Oxton, and what was the third one?
Donna Hespe?
You got it. Invitations have been sent.
And Jackie, have to just unmute yourself after, oh, there you go. So, uh, Jonathan, could you kind of give the council, uh, an update on New Milford, uh, ambulance?
Sure. Thank you, everybody. So COVID's been very rough for us this year. Uh, we started the year with a bunch of volunteers. We were doing okay with covering calls. Uh, when our first wave of COVID, so to speak, hit us back in April and May, uh, most of our volunteers dropped. We went to a lot of supplemental paid staffing. Uh, we got through the rough period of COVID throughout the summer. When things lightened up, we got some volunteers back. We started to improve again. And now that we're hitting the fall and winter months and we're hitting this second wave of COVID that's coming through, uh, we're really struggling again. We're down to myself and one other volunteer that are doing most of the, uh, second or third calls in town. Uh, we have paid staffing for most of our first crews that we have on. Um, just this past weekend, I've been on duty myself, Friday, Saturday, Sunday and today, uh, with one other volunteer coming in for six hours over the weekend. So we're, we're very short on people willing to volunteer when there's such a risk to their health and safety and what they might bring back to their families, uh, for a volunteer position. Uh, so there's some very real concerns with COVID that our people have that we're contending with. And we're trying to get through and keep our crews up.
And I know I, I spoke last week with Jonathan, uh, Jack and Donna. And I know I spoke last week with Jonathan, Jack and Donna concerning this, which is why we're bringing it to the council now. We came up with this figure, which I believe if I'm correct, Donna, this will last us until the end of June, this amount?
Yes, that we can put on a shift, a twelve hour shift for seven nights a week so that we have two full crews on twenty-four seven, which we need because the second call goes out, we don't have the volunteers to take those calls. So this would absolutely eliminate that issue.
And Mike, could you unmute Greg Asapow, our finance director as well?
Greg, you should have the invitation set.
I'm here.
And Greg, the amount, we were looking to take that out of the COVID account at the town council and the board of finance.
Could that just be reworded because right now that money's sitting on the balance sheet? It's not in the COVID account proper, if you will. I could just take that money and put it directly into the ambulance account rather than putting it through your account and then taking from yours and doing another transfer. I'd like to do it directly.
Okay.
And, and I do have a question.
So, excuse me, Greg, just a second. I just want, just for the paperwork here. So you're saying it, it is not in that COVID account? And so what are you taking it from?
It's, it's from an account, just if you can word it from an account to be established by the director of finance.
It'll be established, but where's the money coming from that you're going to establish the account with?
Plus that we realized from twenty twenty. It's that million, well, mine.
Okay, so it's being established with funds from surplus?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, are you, are you going to move that out of surplus into the COVID account?
To increase, the way it's going to work is I'm going to increase the appropriation on the, well, that's what, what I need to get down. I need to ask Donna a question. Donna, are you going to be running the payroll out of ambulance books?
No, this will, we have a contract with the company referred to as Vintec and that's all done automatically right now. We do it all in-house. We do not pay any salaries.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I would just, I would just fund then that that account that was earmarked.
You're going to fund it directly to the New Milford Community Ambulance Account?
Yes.
From an account to be established by use of funds from surplus, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a read, that's a re-giving of my emotion. Does everybody hear that?
Yes.
Yes, but I. So, well, we can answer it with this discussion or when we talk about finances, but how much meat is in the COVID account and how much money has been spent from the COVID account?
Well, and the, if you want to get into that, I, I, well, I can answer it now.
Well, let's take care of the.
Out of surplus, a hundred thousand out of the, out of the million that had been earmarked by council for COVID nineteen use has been allocated to the mayor's office and out of that, seventy-six thousand, six fifty-five has been spent. There's eighty-five hundred in encumbrance and there's fourteen thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars remaining out of the hundred thousand that has already been allocated. So out of the million, a hundred thousand came out. There's nine hundred thousand less. So you're proposing to take the hundred and ten thousand dollars out of the remaining nine hundred thousand dollars that's remaining on the balance sheet?
Okay, thank you. A little hard to follow there.
I know, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so do we, we're going to vote on the reworded motion?
Any other discussion on the motion?
I guess just an observation on my part. This to me is an indication of how valuable our volunteers have been to us when we don't have them. This is kind of a part of portion of the cost.
Right.
Absolutely. Mary Jane?
I just have a question for Donna. Donna's still on?
Yes.
Um, hi Donna. I just, are you transporting patients from New Milford Hospital to Danbury Hospital?
No, we cannot do that. That's, that's, we are nine-one-one agency. It has to be an emergency call, has to go through dispatch, nine-one-one call.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Jonathan, Donna and Jack.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you for helping support us.
Okay, now mayor, item number eight, which is an update from our finance director, Mr. Ospow.
Thank you. This is the finance update for November. I've received the draft copy of the audit that I am currently reviewing with the controller. Expect to finalize that process by the end of this week. All indications are that everything went well. No deficiencies, no material weaknesses. The surplus came in just about where I said it would. A tentative date for the audit presentation will be sometime in January. I will be conducting budget training this Wednesday for all department heads who need it. And apparently there were a lot that reached out, so I'll be doing that this Wednesday. The expenditures, expenditures on a cash basis are at forty-three point six percent of budget. On a straight line basis, they are expected to be at forty-two point three percent. Other legal expenses trending above average at fifty-eight point six percent of budget and bears watching. Most salaries are within the forty-two point three percent expected straight line expenditure pattern. On the revenue side, revenues are at fifty-one point eight percent of budget. Taxes overall are at fifty-six point three percent of budget with current taxes at fifty-six point nine percent. I will be monitoring collections on a weekly basis with the tax collector as January receipts roll in. Interest income while being an issue will be offset through the refinancing of the Clean Water Fund that saved the town approximately two hundred ninety thousand dollars in principal and interest payments this fiscal year. Aging, youth agency and parks revenues are lagging behind the trend due to ongoing COVID nineteen concerns. There are no major budgetary concerns at this point in time. Overall, on a cash basis, expenditures total forty million, two hundred seventy-nine thousand, four hundred ten dollars and fifty-one cents. Revenues totaling fifty-three million, seven hundred seventy-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars and three cents. Leading the town with a positive cash flow of thirteen million, four hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-two cents.
Any, any questions for Greg? Thank you, Greg. Thank you.
Hey, item nine, economic development is an update from EDC Director Karen.
Karen, could you raise your hand? I'm not seeing your name on here.
She's the council chairman.
Oh, okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you, mayor and town council for having me update you at this December meeting.
Karen, can I just ask something before you start? Did you send us your update? Did we get that by email?
There is not a written update. My intent was to update you verbally this evening.
Okay, I just asked that if you could give us, whether it's everything you say or less or more, that's one thing, but I just, it's a lot easier if we can absorb something prior to hearing it after we've been on this meeting for an hour and a half, so. Thanks.
Not a, not a problem. All right, so we have, we are now in our tenth month of business disruption due to COVID and we are still in what is being called phase two point one, which has some similarities to both phase one and phase two. We are anticipating due to rising numbers that there will be further adjustments in the next couple of weeks. And I've also spoken to many individual businesses who plan to make additional business model changes and further adaptations as we get into January. January is traditionally the slower part of the year for many of our businesses that are direct to consumer, whether they be services, restaurants or retailers. So we are doing everything we can right now to help everybody get through the holiday season as much revenue as possible, even with many restrictions. Just a quick overview, so far, we have had eleven business closures that are permanent in New Milford. And five of those eleven locations have been leased or have opened already as a new entity. The latest one, I think many of you have been made aware that Tony Van Grove from the Makery has announced that he will be closing the Makery at the end of the year. So we have, of course, Tony and I have spoken. We have reached out to numerous people to try to help with potentially reopening after COVID and all the restrictions have ended. But, but again, that is, I think, a significant blow to both Bank Street and our entrepreneurial community. We are going to do everything we can to support further entrepreneurial activity and innovation activity in the community going forward. We have had some business sales, as I think the mayor also alluded to. But we also have had twenty-one openings of new businesses so far since March. And seven of those specifically have been in the downtown Village Center, which I think shows an underlying strength in our economy locally and a desire for not only new people to start businesses, but also the community to support new business growth during even a very stressful time such as this. And we have five currently under construction that are going to be opening within the next two months. And so we actually had anticipated a couple more already opening in December, but it looks like those might be pushed out to January a little bit further. So overall, we have actually seen a growth in new small independent businesses, even though we have lost some folks to either COVID or some businesses who had underlying weaknesses that couldn't adapt to a COVID model. In addition, we have thirteen expansions that were major enough to have both a physical facility component as well as potentially staffing expansions. So again, I think that shows that we have continued some overall strength in the community. But certainly COVID has been taking a toll on business models that haven't been able to adapt or physical spaces that could not be modified to meet the requirements of the state's rules by sector. We are very concerned also about restaurants in particular. Those restrictions were the ones rolled back in November. And again, right now we have a curfew on restaurants. They have to close indoor seating by nine thirty. If they're doing takeout or delivery, they can stay open later, but they have to close their dining rooms at nine thirty. We are anticipating some of these restaurants will further reduce hours in January and will also attempt to beef up delivery and pickup options once again as they did back in April and May before outdoor dining was allowed. So again, we hope to, to work with everyone on modifying that as we need to. Let's see, we have launched a permanent buy local program. Many of you have, I think, already seen this. It's called Ultimate New Milford. It has a Facebook page. It is supported by both the Corporation for New Milford Economic Development and financial donation from the Bank Street Group. We have initiated the Holiday Passport Challenge actually before Thanksgiving and it runs through January first. Businesses who wanted to participate in that have the ability to donate a twenty dollar gift card. And we have used the financing to purchase a twenty dollar gift card. We will be giving out two thousand dollars in gift cards to people who make a purchase and enter to win on the Ultimate New Milford Facebook page. So, and that is open to every small independent New Milford businesses. No chain purchases, whether it's restaurants, whether it's retail, no, no big box stores or, or national chains are participating. It's all about shopping local for the holidays and dining local for the holidays. So though we have had many, many people in New Milford shopping local, but it's not only open to New Milford folks. We have had entries from Sherman, Danbury, New Fairfield, Washington, Kent, Brookfield, and we are, again, we're, we're doing drawings every single day. We do have enough gift cards to do two or three gift cards every single day now through January first. And we have more than fifty businesses who have participated and volunteered to donate a gift card and/or we have purchased gift cards. So there are a whole bunch more gift cards to give away. We have some, we have a meeting, a virtual meeting, of course, scheduled for the Restaurant Task Force, which is being rolled into this shop local program. That actually started back in January of twenty twenty. We are opening that and expanding it to all small independent restaurants. And our, we will have a general meeting on December seventeenth at three in the afternoon to talk about promotions for January, February and March. They've been presented with some ideas and opportunities that we may be pursuing based on what funding's available and of course, the support of the businesses themselves, which elements they want to pursue. Uh, let's see, we also have been looking at EDA grant opportunities, particularly those related to entrepreneurship and innovation. I mentioned that, you know, regarding the Makery, but we do have opportunities to seek grant funds that will help us fill the gap that was formerly filled by the Makery and potentially look at other programs in conjunction with West Con and Nagata Valley Community College and enabling us to partner with them to bring programs for small business support directly to New Milford rather than kind of tapping into programs that are in other locations. Uh, I have been appointed also to the Long Term Recovery Committee. We have started meeting weekly and that is an activity that will be rather intense going forward. We are wrapping this entrepreneurship and innovation theme into the plans for long-term recovery and how we can open doors to new economic activity based on the foundations of strength that New Milford already has. New Milford has a long, strong history of small business development and support. And that is one of our biggest assets going forward. And again, something I think we need to keep building on in addition to encouraging as much, you know, working from home and, and use of broadband and five G as we can support as we move forward. Also, there have been a number of opportunities for many of us on economic development. Also, there have been a number of opportunities for many of us on economic development committees, commissions, or employed in this area to, to participate in some very high-level analysis of economic trends in Connecticut and in the Northeast. Some of these were put on by CCM. I also participated in the International Council of Shopping Centers Real Estate Convention, which was held virtually and based in New York City. It's always December, but again, that was virtual where we had many opportunities to promote New Milford as an area that has benefited from folks leaving more urban areas in northern New Jersey and New York and choosing to call New Milford their home and their business location.
Karen, can I just ask a question now that you brought that up? How many people have you spoken with or entertained that want to move their business to New Milford?
Okay, that's a great question. There, in the last month alone, so maybe since the 1st of November, there have been more than a dozen businesses that I have or individuals that I have been working with. We actually did a tour of some space in New Milford last week for several folks who were looking for mostly smaller spaces, either individual or small offices.
These are people from urban areas you're talking, that's why I'm asking?
Yes.
How many of them are coming from the cities here?
All, all 12.
Okay, and all 12 of those, how many do you think are going to end up staying here and opening a business?
Oh, you know, I would give us at least 50% of that because they are already intent on this area, either Litchfield County or northern Fairfield, Fairfield County.
Great, thank you.
And most of those are coming from New York City by far, although we did have somebody who's, who's interested in moving here from Denver. And, and I show, again, that was one of the people who looked at space last week. They are moving here to New Milford the week before Christmas, so I guess that's what, this week? And they intend on, on occupying the space that they were shown on January 1st. So that, that decision was actually made on site. So there is, again, there's still somewhat of a shortage of, of ready-to-go space. This space was perfect for them and their business and they were able to negotiate right there and, and make an agreement. But some of the other ones, I would say that there, of course, there are other regional players that we have to compete against, but it's less about the cost and it's more about is the space correct for what they want? Does it have enough either visibility or is it, is it in a multi-tenant building, things like that, that make it either the right fit or not the right fit? But I would give us six of the 12. Again, you know, we've had 26 new businesses in the last 10 months and how many in downtown? Seven? Eight. Eight of those have been in downtown. So we, we are doing well as far as that goes, I think, overall. And I do expect some of the bigger businesses that we have been communicating with over the last three months to still come through. Those, those have not been here physically in the last six weeks, but who have virtually visited us and who intend to visit in the first quarter of the year.
Great, that's the kind of thing that I'd like to see you put in, in an email to us prior to a meeting, so we have time to look at it, digest it, and, you know, instead of dragging on, asking you a lot of questions now while we're trying to think of it. But thank you for that. We'll do that going forward, right?
Yes.
Thanks.
Any questions for Karen? Great, thank you Karen for the update.
Yep.
Katie?
We have under Economic Development Item B, which is a motion to accept the tax deferral application on retail self-storage facility. I'm not sure is that, that's a description or if that's what it's actually called, but 46 Kent Road in New Milford.
Second. And we have a, we have a first and a second. Karen, can you give us an update on the abatement?
Yes, I would be happy to. So the 46 Kent Road project is going to be built and owned by an LLC, which is Distinctive Storage of New Milford, I think is the correct name. Let me just check it, I'll pull up my memo so I can...
That's what's on the application, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that is going to be the actual name of the entity which will own and manage the property. This project meets, as Brian Lastra and my memo both reinforce, that this project meets the requirements of our ordinance for tax deferral. It is a new construction that will cost approximately 2.6, almost 2.7 million dollars and be valued after construction over $2 million. Our tax abatement ordinance was definitely weighted towards new construction and offers an incentive for private investment, which is what this is. So the, as, as has been proposed, the developer will be investing 2.6, almost 2.7 million dollars. There will be, so I'm told, three jobs created with an average salary of 50,000. The new payroll from that is $150,000 annually. Of course, other revenues will also be paid as far as workforce taxes and payroll taxes to the state. And again, those salaries will continue to be distributed through the community. We have talked previously about primary and secondary impacts. This ordinance has been designed to give a short-term benefit to the developer for private investment. And again, that is what is happening in this proposal. Following the five years, it goes to 100% tax collection. So immediately following the five-year deferral period and for the life of the building, we, the town will collect at least 59,000, if not more, because again, hopefully we expect that values will continue to increase as our community becomes more successful and attractive to private investment. So again, right now, it is the estimate from Mr. Lastra is that it will be valued for assessment at over $2 million, generating a future taxes generated of at least 59,000 per year. Personal property will be minimal in this facility, estimated at 37,284, generating $1,000 in personal property taxes. And of course, the land taxes do not reduce or cannot be abated and they will continue to be paid at the current level of $3,000 a year. This incentive will be offset by revenues in the community in about 4.45 years and that is where these numbers of the indirect and direct impacts are offsetting those paybacks. So again, this is within the national average for incentives and it definitely meets the expectations of the way that our abatement ordinance was worded. So I don't know if you have further questions on that or if you had other things to discuss.
And Karen, before we open it up to the council for questions, just for those, to kind of give them more information, on your EIA, when you talk about the indirect impact, if you could kind of expand a little bit on the, on the indirect impact and how that affects the local economy with ancillary jobs and ancillary income?
Well, sure. So every business in New Milford is going to have money that is spent outside of just paying taxes. So we already talked a little bit about payroll. Certainly in this case, the payroll to three people is not as large as some of the other projects that we've looked at and approved in the past. However, it's still three more jobs and three more people bringing home revenue to take care of their families or to supplement other incomes in the, in the area. So in addition, they're probably also going to hire other companies to do work at the site. They may hire a landscape company. They may hire a cleaning company. They're certainly going to have other companies that they contract with to do things like insurance, to do things to, I don't, I don't know, landscape.
But the building.
Pay the building on a regular basis. They're going to buy a sign for the building. Those are monies that are going to be spent in the community. The employees are going to pay taxes or other fees on their home, on their cars. They're going to eat locally, they're going to shop in local stores. And all of those things build up our local economy, support other local businesses. Many companies like this will, like I said, contract with other local businesses to do snow plowing. I mean, we just talked about a storm coming, you know, those, those are definitely going to help support other businesses in the community. And all of that distribution of, of money from this new $2 million building, which I have to believe is going to be well taken care of as an investment property. So I have to believe that they're going to be taking good care of it, maintaining it, insuring it, and also, you know, supporting other businesses in New Milford and, and their employees. So that is where the both direct revenue comes from. So that would be the taxes associated with it, that's direct. And then the indirect or multiplier is what would be generated in those other fees and expenses that the company's expected to pay. And in this case, I have used a very conservative multiplier, which is 1.99 times. So I know that there's a lot of discussion that money spent locally can circulate as many as seven times and that is absolutely true depending on the type of business. So for each type of industry, there's a different multiplier and I used a fairly conservative one at 1.99, just shy of two times. That is pretty typical for a facility of this type. And again, I have had training in this area and also have the latest updated numbers from national sources to use this multiplier, which I felt was most appropriate for, for this project.
Thank you Karen. Mike, you had a question? Michael?
Yes, thank you Karen for the update. Is this, public comments seemed a little bit against this. Is this the first that you're hearing from the public that there, you know, the four or five people that spoke are not too happy about this project?
Yes, I have watched, so I was aware of this project before it went through the zoning process and have spoken to the owner of the project and also staff people several times about this. And as the project went through the process, I think you heard some of those same comments tonight regarding, there were, as this went through zoning and as it went through inland wetlands, there was concern from the public about being in a floodplain area or flood, flood-prone area. And again, I think the proposal for the smallest footprint possible, making this building slightly taller, was taking that into consideration so that the least amount of space on the property would be disturbed. And if you look at the site plan, you see that the building has been moved significantly to the front away from the river and there is very minimal parking or disturbance of the natural area on the riverside. So I think that all, took that into account and met our regulations. In addition, there, at the zoning board, there was certainly discussion about the height of the building. The zoning board listened to a lot of public comment in both of the meetings that it held. It did not shut the public comment down early. It allowed plenty of people to participate in that discussion. And again, they had the opportunity to listen to all of the discussion and make a sound decision based on all of the information and the proposal that was submitted. This, I did hear the, the folks who spoke earlier tonight had concerns, in particular, I think two people mentioned the owner of the piece of property and also several people still remain unsatisfied with the height. But those are issues that, again, were discussed at the zoning board. And in this case, with the town council, it is your decision now to decide whether this meets the intent and, and expectations of this incentive that we have designed for private investment in new construction. It is my, and I think I have, I said this actually at one of the zoning board meetings, that this is the, this project as proposed is going to generate the maximum amount of financial benefit to the town that would be possible on this location, given the constraints of the river and given our requirements in our zoning and inland-wetland ordinance. So this to me would maximize the development on the site, generate the most future property tax revenue that we could expect and not impinge more onto this site, which again, has some, some physical limitations. So again, I think we have incentivized this development with this proposal for a tax abatement as much as it would need. And again, I think it meets what our intent was, was to, I mean, it's going to generate $2.6 million of new construction on Kent Road.
Karen, I just have a quick question. Well, what will we, that piece of property's been empty for, oh, I guess forever. What were we receiving in taxes while it was sitting there?
$3,000 a year.
Thank you.
And you will continue to receive that every single year?
I know, that's nice. No, thanks.
Yep.
Tom?
Thank you Mayor. Karen, let me to, to go on and take Katie's question a bit further. Let's, let's just work the math here. So in economic development, we look in longer term, right? We look on a long perspective.
Yes.
But let's take an average of, let's say 35 years, right? Use that number. If we use the $3,010 a year number that we have currently, over the next 35 years, that, that will give the town $105,350 in total tax revenue if our taxes stay the same for the next 35 years?
If, if nothing gets built on that property, that's correct.
If it stays the same and the taxes stay the same, right? Which, we're just going to use static numbers here.
Yes.
Take the 35 years with this property, even with the tax abatement, in the end, we wind up with $1.884,450. That's $1,180,450 as opposed to $10350 over the next 35 years.
Yes.
So I heard somebody make, a banker earlier made a comment that this was a gift. This was some sort of gift. At $2.6 million, if this client put down, which most banks would ask for right now, at least 20%, even at a 15-year mortgage, a two-and-a-half, the monthly payment there is over four, almost $15,000 a month. So this $4,930 tax abatement that we're giving for just five years is going to help that business cover part of that monthly payment while these businesses fill out. Somebody also made a bizarre statement earlier that this would cannibalize other businesses. There isn't a lender in the United States of America that doesn't take multiple market feasibility and absorption studies into lending on properties like this. It's not, it's not just your ability to pay. There isn't a lender in the country that is lending, counting on other businesses being put out of business for one to be successful. So there's another misnomer that was passed on earlier in public comment that I find really offensive because there isn't anybody that's lending like that. This is a property that was going to stay empty for a very long time. It's been, it's been empty, it grew corn there when I remember, when I was younger. If, if it was even grown there, the trees or that are probably older than that. I may be mistaken, it was probably just where the brewery was. So to me, for a five-year tax abatement to get $1,008,000 plus, if taxes remain the same as opposed to $105,000 over the next 35 years, I'll take the $1,008,000 every day of the week. I'm at 100% support of this. And the fact that, that people are using the client's name as some sort of polit, that it was some sort of political gift, is an absolute farce. It's an absolute farce. These are business people, it doesn't matter what your politics is in town. If you come forward to the Economic Development Commission or the town council and you bring a solid business proposal that's going to bring us $1.8 million over the next 35 years instead of $105,000, I think you should be listened to and this is something that should pass. This is good for New Milford and there's, and this will attract other businesses to make investments in New Milford. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor. I should have mentioned that you are correct about investors are not going to invest at 2.6... Thank you, counselor. I should have mentioned that you are correct about investors are not going to invest $2.7 million into something intended to cannibalize other businesses. They would have done a demand and feasibility study to determine what the need was in the community. And I think knowing as I do a little bit about the storage facility business, that storage facilities, as people relocate and move around, are very highly in demand. And this would be climate controlled. And again, it would have an elevator in it and a lot of security, which again, I think is something that our, our existing facilities may or may not have. And this would be a new offering and a new higher bar that this would set. Would some people relocate to it? That's possible. But since there are currently waiting lists for storage facilities.
Right.
You know, I don't know that that would necessarily be a problem. I think it would give people moving to New Milford or downsizing a choice in where they want to store their personal items and, and their business items potentially. So again, you are correct that, that lenders or investors are going to do a lot of research before they spend $2.7 million.
Any other questions for Karen? Mary Jane?
Yeah, Karen, I have a question, and it was some, somebody brought this up at public participation about the economic development. I think it was Mike Anastas who's on the Economic Development Commission. And he said that this was never brought to them, the abatement proposal.
That is correct. So the way the process works is that any application goes directly to me and I share it with the mayor and the tax assessor, Mr. Lastra. And he and I prepare the reports and it goes directly to the town council. So these are not vetted or approved by any other committee. And again, we are intending to have a streamlined process. The Commission on Economic Development was very instrumental in developing the, the ordinance and in advising the council on the opportunity that we had to incentivize additional development. It would be, since they are engaged in policy overall, it is not their particular role to approve or give feedback on particular projects that are, that are, have not gotten a policy framework to them. In this case, the ordinance has already been approved. It is the implementation of it, which is up to the town council. So that is why that was not discussed or brought up at the Economic Development Commission. And again, they have many policy and procedural issues that they are looking at in order to improve our processes overall, rather than take up time for them reviewing applications such as this one.
Okay, um, I have, I have some real concerns about this deferment. And I guess my biggest concern is that with COVID, we don't know how long this economic depression is going to go on. And I suspect from what I've been reading, that it's going to be years before we actually really recuperate economically from, from this whole disaster. And I'm really concerned, I'm very concerned about just the general New Milford public paying their taxes, that, you know, people who have lost jobs are going to have a tough time. And, you know, and then I just, I just think this is probably an inappropriate time for a non-essential business to be getting this tax deferment. When, like, we had Mr. Naham talking about how his business at the club is struggling and a lot of small businesses are struggling. And yet, we're going to give this business that's non-essential, just for storage, you know, a tax break. And I, I just, I, it, to me, it doesn't make sense. And I don't think it's making sense to the general public either. And I think this is going to be an issue for the town going forward. I, I would recommend not approve this. I, I'm not done. So I would really, I, I just, I just don't see that three employees making $50,000. I mean, I feel like you make it sound like it's going to be like a candy store. Like everybody's going to get, or, you know, a piece of the pie. Everybody's going to get some candy out of this. And it's going to be a small amount of money. These people who are making $50,000 don't have a lot of extra money to spend on anything. And I, I just think, I think this is a mistake right now. I'm not saying in the future, but I'm saying right now, for all the people that are hurting and having a problem paying their taxes, especially over the next couple of years until this economy gets back on its feet, I think this is probably an inappropriate time to be giving a non-essential business a tax for abatement, abatement.
May I please respond to the counselor?
Karen?
Okay, so thank you very much for voicing your concern. And I can understand exactly where you're coming from. However, I, I have to say, having been through numerous recessions and depressed and, and business upheavals, that, that if New Milford wants to recover and go beyond where we were before, now is the correct time to offer incentives to businesses who want to invest in New Milford. We have, we have much to do to put ourselves beyond where we were previously. And in order to do that, we have proposed this ordinance change, right, earlier this year. And we did it so that we could attract investment. We know that the odds are going to be against us and difficult because business in general has been so disrupted. However, if we have an opportunity to get investment in our community, again, a $2.7 million building, and I agree, three jobs is not a ton of jobs.
I hate to cut you off, but he originally said there was only going to be one job. And now all of a sudden, we're up to three. So where did that come from? So is he telling us the truth here? Who's telling the truth? One job or three jobs?
His application as completed asked, said three jobs at an average of $50,000. So we're going based on his application for this abatement. But again, I, I would like to say that, that it, and I think this was also mentioned earlier. We, as much as we know that we need help from the federal government and the state government, we also can control some of our own destiny by what's in our control. We know we have the ability in New Milford to offer this abatement. That's why it's there. That's why it's approved. And this meets the criteria we said that we wanted to achieve. And this is another step in the right direction for us to get more in private investment in our town. And I know that, that right now, it's tough for many businesses. We are doing a lot to help those businesses and those individuals in this community. People have been working a lot of overtime, volunteering, donating. And that is not going to stop just because we're approving this. But we need some leverage, right? And, and this incentive is leveraged to get more investment locally. So again, I, I think that, I hear what you're saying. I agree where some people would not see this perspective that I've just shared with you. But I can tell you that, that again, if we have the opportunity to attract growth during this period of time, it, it behooves us to have this discussion and seriously consider offering the incentive. So thank you very much for that.
Katie?
Can't hear you, Katie.
Can't hear you. Your microphone maybe?
Nope. Hear me now.
Chris?
Yeah, thank you. And, and thanks for the report, Karen. So the way I'm looking at this, you've calculated this out to be a 4.4, 5-year payback, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it's going to have a grandless growth of $2.6 million, correct?
Yes.
Great. And for me, this meets the criteria, the same criteria that we've applied to other applications and approved. And, and, you know, some of the comments earlier that somehow we're taking money out of taxpayers' pockets and taxpayers have to pay something for this is just, it's, it's patently wrong. We're just, we're, we're deferring some taxes for five years to incentivize businesses to build here. Seems like a great business. And, and grandless growth, and, and I agree with what you're saying, Karen. Now is the time to do this. When we have businesses that want to locate here, they want to build here, they want to invest millions of dollars in our community to be competitive with other places, this is what we all agree, what this council agreed we would have to do. And, and quite honestly, I think a lot of the opposition to this is just pure politics. It has nothing to do with the business.
Katie?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. I just had a quick question. So this went through the zoning, right? I mean.
Yes, approved that zoning.
So I realize that, you know, people can be adverse to something or for something. So, but it was, it was all approved by zoning or we wouldn't be talking about it.
That's correct.
So apparently, there weren't as many people who were opposed to the idea as were okay with the idea because here we are talking about it. So now we're just discussing an abatement, which has been pointed out in dollars and cents. And I, I, I'm, Mary Jane, I understand what you're saying, and maybe you don't think it's the right time. I don't know if there's ever going to be a right time, who knows? But there is a need or else they wouldn't have loaned him the money to do this. And they do studies, I do know that. And if enough people thought that there wasn't a need for any more storage, they probably, we wouldn't be talking about it. So, you know, the worst that can happen is it doesn't do what everybody, what we think it's going to do, which would put us still receiving the $3,000 that we get now. Basically.
Mike? Cole?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, so it passed zoning, it passed wetlands, it passed all the commissions and all the, he dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's and did everything, right, Karen?
That is correct.
So we can't pick and choose because we don't particularly like somebody or it, it, it doesn't work that way. We as a council, as was said before, decided that we wanted more business in town. We want to attract people. And in order to do this, we have to be fair. It's got to be across the board. We can't pick and choose. I'm very in favor of this. Thank you.
Dave?
Well, I'm very disappointed there's only three people employed. Also, of all the businesses that we've given the abatements to, in my opinion, they were coming here anyway. They were building before we even gave the abatement, as far as I know. And for me, I prefer to assist our existing businesses and our existing homeowners in this terrible time of need. And we do have people, many people, more than we probably care to know about, that could use that, their share of a $295,000 abatement over the years. And I don't think it's the right time either. I think we could re, certainly revisit this issue. I think that we could also look at whether or not to give 100% abatement or at 50% or at 25% or 75%. We haven't even entertained that idea. And, yeah, it's the amount of people that are employed. Many of you probably remember men still. I'm still waiting for the 350 people that were promised. Didn't happen. And we spent millions for that. So I, I don't think it's the right time. I think it's a good idea. I just, not, not at this point.
Hey, Dale?
Mom, you guys keep talking about these, this comment about these businesses are coming anyway. Anybody that does a business plan puts these numbers into their math to make sure it's going to be profitable. And to give a, a new business time to get their feet underneath them by giving these breaks is very important. Those numbers are definitely done. So to say they were going to come here anyway is, is your guess, but it's not, it's not true. The other thing is, is what Michael Gold says, we don't really have much of a choice. If we turn this down, when he meet every single one of the criterias, we're going to end up in court because he's going to go straight to, to a lawyer and say, they didn't give me this abatement when I met every single criteria. It's not our, up to us to decide what someone does with the property. But if they meet the criteria that we approved, then we have to pass that. I, it's, it's like we're going back and forth because someone doesn't like what was being built there. Well, you know what? We're an American. If someone has a piece of property that meets all the requirements that has to be in that property, then we have to let it go. And, and that's the way life is. It, it's, we're, we're in a free country, at least right now.
Mike Sinello, can you unmute Town Attorney Dabella?
Invitation is set, Randy.
Okay. Randy, Mike Naham had just made a comment. Could you opine as our town attorney on, on what Mike had said concerning, if someone meets all the criteria and the council decides not to award that, what could happen?
The town, the, the town council has absolute authority to just, to deny or grant any application. The language is clear that it's their sole judgment and discretion. So there shouldn't be any liability whatsoever because it's, it's a discretionary act.
Tom? Even if, even if we're arbitrarily making decisions that, that aren't consistent from one to another?
The nature of discretion, Mike, is an arbitrary act. And that's why you wrote it that way. That's exactly why that ordinance is drafted that way. So it doesn't give rise to an obligation to grant that. And it relies upon the discretion and judgment of the legislative body.
Okay. Tom?
Karen, if you're still there, did anybody ever bring up how many people, speaking of jobs, that were brought up before? How many people it's going to take to actually construct this? How many local supply houses will be bringing materials there? How much, how many gallons of diesel fuel and gas will be used by the contractors? How much equipment may be bought in town? How much other revenue would be coming off of something like this while this project is being built?
So that is a very good point. And the, I use a fairly straightforward economic impact analysis piece. There are more complicated ones that can also estimate that. The, there, as you pointed out, there will be a significant amount of work generated in construction of a $2.7 million building, including, as I, as I had already mentioned, landscaping, some, you know, electric work. There's going to be plenty of subcontractors getting work out of this. And many more people will be working on the construction.
Right, because you just don't, you just don't spend $2.6 million to build something and take $2.6 million out of the bank and pluck it in, in a hole somewhere. There's actually people who need these jobs locally, as Mary Jane pointed out and David pointed out. There are people who need this work and not handout work, actual work. So I mean, with pride that they are now constructing something in town. That will help a lot of people locally while this very small break will be given for the next five years. And I want to point that again, at the very end of it, very end of it, we get $1.8 million as opposed to 105. I don't know what some people use as math ear, but 105 as opposed to 1.8 million is a pretty good investment.
Right. And I will also mention that while there may not be any legal repercussions if the town council does, decides not to approve this or to modify the award in some way. However, part of the reason we did this was to send a message to the development community that we wanted them to invest here. And so that, that not approving it would certainly send the opposite message. That, that again, that, that a decision was diverted from what we had proposed. And we also do expect that they go through the approval process prior to applying for this. So we aren't going to see preliminary applications prior to some kind of process happening where, where they go through inland wetlands or they go through zoning. They're going to have those approvals. Again, so it may appear that these are already made decisions that, that were incentivizing. However, I would say that they can, they certainly can change their mind even after getting approvals. And we've seen projects not get built after approvals in the past. So again, I think the way we designed it was that we would have the opportunity to work for a while with the applicant before they go through this part of the process. So we know how So we know how serious they are because they've been through other approvals already. So they've, they've already invested a lot of money in engineering and, and drainage design. And a lot of, a lot of preliminary work has gone into this to get to this point.
Chris?
Yeah, I, I just wanna, you know, say one thing. I wanna address something that was mentioned in public comments by Mr. Winter. I think he made a very reckless comment, which he does want to do. And I normally wouldn't address it, but this one kinda really crossed the line where he mentioned that the, the builder of this project has donated to six council people. It's an extraordinarily reckless comment to say in, in the public and is a hundred percent wrong. So Mr. Winter should be ashamed of himself for, for saying that in a public venue like this.
Absolutely. Chris, thanks for saying that.
Doug?
So the council remembers in the last few meetings, we, we voted to abate, I believe, a gas station. I believe there were bait, a restaurant and a, and I believe a warehouse a little north of Big Y, right? And I don't believe there was one public comment against it. I don't think there was one councilman against it. And it went through unanimously. And all of a sudden, here we are today arguing about a personal, I believe, a political argument more than a person who's investing two point seven million dollars into our community. That's the real question that we should be facing. I didn't think anybody was against the other ones at all, if I recall. And here we are for the last hour arguing about a person than an investment in his town. I think we need to move forward and vote on this. I think we've beaten this long enough.
Hold a question here. Mary Jane?
So Karen, would you be able to send me your whole analysis on this project by tomorrow?
I could do it during the day tomorrow.
Sure, that would be great. And I just, I'm not done.
Question.
All the questions.
I'm not finished yet.
I second.
A statement, please. I have the floor. So I would also like to say that, in my opinion, this is not political. This is about, I really believe because of COVID and the economic impact it's gonna have on our residents in our town, that it's an inappropriate time to be giving a tax deferral on a non-essential business. And it has nothing to do with Paul Simansky's project or whatever. But I just feel like this is really inappropriate, and I don't think it's gonna sit well with a lot of people in the town.
Mary Jane, you didn't make the argument when a gas station, where we already have twenty in town. You didn't make that argument when they wanted a payment. Why?
Well, it's not just a gas station. It's also a store. It's a convenience store for a lot of people.
There's two employees, there's two employees in that gas station, Mary Jane.
There's also the sonic part of the business too. So, but, you know, I'm sorry. And I, I do resent your comments, Mr. Cosgrove. And maybe you'd like to make an apology to me for that too. Thank you very much.
Can you call the question, Pete, please?
Let's vote, please.
Can I make a comment, please?
One point eight million.
Can we let Walter, can we let Walter speak, please, Walter?
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the beauty of democracy is that we can agree to disagree. And I must admit, I, I'm really stuck with, with this concept here of, of the building, where the location is and the size of the building. I, I must, I must agree with Mary Jane. Right now, I see this as being non-essential. And I, I just can't quite get my claw around the fact that this building is going to meet the spirit of our ordinance dealing with tax deferment. And I'm, I'm also wondering what kind of impact it's gonna have on the small plaza next door. If you're moving the building closer to the road, what's gonna happen to the other businesses that are in the area there? Yeah, I, I don't see it as a benefit. I see it as a large building. I see it as we are giving too much away from the store in our tax referrals. So I would vote no against this.
Real, real, real simple question, then we can vote, if you don't mind.
Dave, go ahead.
Was there a traffic study done?
No.
No?
You need one. You don't have a high, there's not a high, these are not high-traffic businesses.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't required.
Required. Oh, okay. Not a high-traffic business.
Can you vote?
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, shake your hands, say a no. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed. Mr. Mayor, can we get a hand count on that?
Yep, we got, we got a hand count.
Okay.
Any abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries.
So for the record, for Stephanie, Walter, you were a no, and Stephanie's still with us, I think?
I, I am.
Oh, there you are. And Mary Jane also, right?
And Dave. And Dave, yeah.
And Dave. Okay.
Well, a motion to adjourn then, and I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Save you, Walter.
Merry Christmas.
Happy Hanukkah. Stay safe out there Wednesday, everybody.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I second, Steph.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Happy Hanukkah. Good night, everybody.